My name is Kay Rehmantine. We live in Pakewitt and we live on Forward Street. Recently, we just moved about 16 months ago from Ohio. And I want to speak to you about first impressions. I have been disappointed in... Well, just jump in the car with me. Let's go for a ride. We're going to come from Spartanburg and we're going to turn left onto West Main Street. There is trash there that you would not believe. I'm embarrassed. We have company and family coming sometime in March. And I'd like to tell them to just fly into my front yard. I'm very disappointed. I've not seen any action done in the 16 months that we've been here. We moved here because my daughter lives here and that son-in-law, who is a pastor of one of the churches here. But anyway, you come all the way down. After you turn left onto West Main Street, you go all the way down to the way we go home is you would turn left on Memorial. And there's trash there also. But there are houses there that looks like they opened the door and threw their daily trash out. And this really bothers me. We bought a new home here. The smallest home you've ever bought, the most expensive home you've ever bought. Not because of your area, but that's just the way that it is. I feel like that our house is going to be depreciated because of the area. Anyway, you come down 150th and you turn right onto Fuller. And you turn into our driveway. And what you see between the two houses there, the house behind us has a trampoline that is broken. And it's pushing against the fence, knocking the fence down. Not our fence, we didn't put it up, but it's what we see. That's what we're seeing from our backyard. There's a barking dog there that barks 24/7. I'm not here about the dog, other than to say, I feel sorry for the dog. I don't love this being taken care of. Actually, there's two dogs there. And with the trash in the backyard, I am concerned about. And I really do feel that our home would be depreciated if we were to try to sell it right now. Because first impressions stick. And when you pull into West Main Street or onto West Main Street and you see all that trash, it's not just a soda can here and there and a piece of paper. I mean, it actually looks like somebody just dumped their bag of trash there without the bag. And so today I came up on the next exit where it has the nice Pakewitt sign. Is that...
Harold.
Yes. Yes, okay. It didn't seem to be that bad. There was a little bit here and there, but nothing that bad. So I would like to... I like the people here. I have no problems with that. I love our church, the people there. I'm just... I just feel like that we will be, if it continues, we will be known as the town that does not take care of their things. That's just a trashy part of the town. A little pun here on the other side of the tracks. So that's what I'm here about. And I think that's all I have to say. I'll leave you with first impressions because that's what I started with. And that's how I hope people will get us when they pull in, seeing our community. We want our community to look nice. I do. And I just think, I don't know, is there somebody that does this? Is there somebody not doing their job? It's worse than it was 16 months ago. So I don't know if you're allowed to answer my questions.
Will will can do it. We'll get back, we'll get you, we'll get you. Nice to have you back.
Okay. Well, I would love to take care of who's... We've always lived in a nice city, big cities. I've lived in Akron and Cleveland and Tampa and Baltimore. And we've never experienced this kind of thing in our neighborhood. So I'm just disappointed. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Not here to recell the polls.
Okay, good.
Brian Bozard, 474 McDowell Street. And I'm going to kind of, I'm going to kind of tag on to what the lady just came up here and said. We have Michael Berry. He's going around giving tickets to people that have a trash yard. We, as a town, we don't have any place for people to go and take trash that don't have the means of doing it. So I'm making a suggestion to the town. Maybe we can have a couple dumpsters over here at the old bathroom on the first Saturday of every month. Open it up to the town and the surrounding areas. Hey, if you want to come bring rubber, metal, wood, stuff that's in your yard that you want to get rid of, an old trampoline, here's a place to do it. We're going to do it on the first of every, the first weekend of every month. They can't cost that much for, to get three dumpsters, to have a company come and take them to, take them to a landfill. The only problem is we'd have to have somebody there to monitor what they put in. I agree. The trash along West Main Street, and I'll hit on it. It's not in the town, so we really don't have the means to go and send people out there to pick it up. I think Mr. Thomas Williams has had a group go out and do pickup. I appreciate that. I think, I think it looked a little bit better from what I heard. Somebody said, oh, we'd like some trash to be picked up. That's enough on the trash. The dumpsters, I think, would be a great idea. The next thing, a town street between 176 is called Deerwood. Deerwood runs into Hillbrook. Hillbrook runs into Pine Street, where the fire station is. The speed limit on that road is 35 miles an hour. You go to 150, Highway 150, it is not a town road. The speed limit is 25. I would think that Deerwood and Hillbrook would be more residential street. I'm asking the town to look into putting that street as 25 miles an hour. I also have a problem with, if you're on 176 coming from Spartanburg, there are signs for Pakewitt Business District, Pakewitt Fire Department, Pakewitt Police Department. I think those signs need to be removed because those roads, that road is being used as a thoroughfare for big trucks, Dollar General, gas trucks, and other trucks that are making deliveries to IGA, to Dollar General. It's a residential street. I think that we need to, as a town, we need to slow that stuff down. Not sit in front of the fire station as I pull out the fire truck. I gotta look both ways three times just to make sure there's not a big truck coming. Those are two things. Last thing, it goes to, I looked at the board. We're having a planning, a planning commission meeting to discuss changing, changing the zoning of a few properties. I would make the suggestion that before the zoning commission makes any changes to any of the variances in any of how the buildings are being used, I think the town needs to do, as Mr. Patrick Kay has stated, we need to do a master plan. So before we go changing how businesses are being used, I think the master plan needs to be done so that we're not making changes before the master plan is done and saying, hey, we don't think that you should be putting a car lot here and a car lot here because this is a residential area. I think the master plan will come in and say, this is a residential area. I think that we need to keep it residential. Let's put the businesses over here. Let's put the car dealerships over here. And that's basically it. I have 30 seconds left. I mean, I'm not, I'm not here... I would like to make one comment. The HVAC system that was installed here at the town, it was put on bid. We didn't go with the lowest bidder. We didn't go with the lowest bidder because that person lived in the town. Unfortunately, the person that we gave the job to does not live in town. They live in Central Pakewitt. So all that money that we gave to that company to be here in the town, they don't even pay town taxes. None of that revenue is going to go back to the town in their taxes for that business because their business is not even in the town. So that's all I have. And if y'all would just send any replies or responses back to my comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have needed approval of the minutes February 2nd, 2023.
Make a motion.
Most made second, approval of minutes of February 2nd, 2023. Any questions? Any corrections? All in favor? All opposed? Consider admitting the previous, uh, previous minutes of 10:06, 22, 11:03, 22.
The minutes need to be amended. The 10:06, 22 minutes, we could reflect that. The quote from CWG was 79,106. And the minutes for the 11:03, we can reflect the CWG getting here was 79,106, as well as already has not responded when he knows the current process of the same. Y'all have not put in the minutes as well.
Why are we amending? The numbers aren't right?
Yes. What was said, what was said is what the meeting should reflect. The meeting minutes should reflect what was actually said. And what was actually said is 79,106.
It says the bids are, and in our packet they were accurate, right? Whether, whether the ministry or misspoke or whatever, it just says the bids are.
Whether the ministry or misspoke?
Misspoke.
Misspoke.
He may have, he may have misspoke when he was reporting them, but they were accurate.
Misspoke, I understand that. How many times would you consider misspoke? Once, twice, five times?
I don't know. What would you consider?
I would consider once misspoke. Regardless, what was said in the minutes, in the meeting, it should be, is what's in the minutes. What was spoken at the council meeting should be what's in the minutes of the meeting. Am I right on that?
No, I disagree on that. I mean, we had a black and white in front of us.
You disagree on that because of what?
Because we had the incorrect information in front of us.
So you, you don't simply understand that the fact is what's said is what should be in the meeting minutes as opposed to what's information that you're only privy to. That's not what's in the minutes because the public doesn't get to see what you have. What's important is the meeting minutes are what the public gets to see. And what's said is what the public can see later if they're not pressured. Does that make sense?
I can see where you're going with that. I just, I think, I'm just stating a number that's right in front of us.
That number was in front of you.
What, what are you trying to say? You know, because, oh, Patrick said that one thing is home, home out, let me do this. Okay, that's, yes, good. I mean, you know, in the minutes, it should go to that, you know, whatever, you know, it's, you know.
What's the amount that you'd like to change to? This is the...
79,800.
So the current minutes or the proposed?
For October, James.
October 6. Yeah, the October 6 and the number.
So October 6 is under minimum length?
Yes. So October 6, actually, we, we had amended that previously. And we had talked about making some amendments in October 6 council meetings. And then in, if I'm not mistaken, November or December, we actually approved those minutes without them actually being given to us with the changes made, the corrections being made. So we were asked to make approval to a set of minutes, of minutes that we did not have in front of us with the corrections that were made. It would not have happened and we did not actually have those with us.
So you want the figures to match?
Yeah, the figures need to be matched what was spoken at the council meeting. And if you'd like, I would like to show you exactly what was said.
I'm in favor of the CWG.
No, I know, I know what's said.
It's because of the name of the section.
Both of them. And then, and then if you'll notice at one point in time, I actually, actually specifically asked, does this include the police department? And yes, in fact, it includes the police department, which would be the difference in the 79,106 and the 80, whatever, I think we had 85, 8.5. So the, the figures just didn't simply match because they either weren't added up or they were perceived to be...
Did you know the answer to that when you asked the question? Or were you genuinely not sure?
I, I asked the question because what was told to me was this is the quote. This is, this is the figure and this is the...
So did that answer, knowing it was wrong, or you didn't?
I accepted single thing. What I accepted was what was told to me. This is the meeting minutes. This is what was said to the public. This is what the public is going to understand what they're, we're going to use our minds.
Was that by design that you didn't correct it?
I'm sorry?
Was it by design that you didn't correct it?
What, what was I going to correct? Three months straight at the same hours of the day.
So you knew they were wrong and you didn't bring it up?
How would I know it was wrong?
That's what I'm asking you.
What was said, what was said is what was, what was there. That's what we all agreed on.
I'm asking if you were asking, I just have like a question to get him to say the wrong thing. You give the answer. I don't know, I'm asking.
Why would I do such a thing?
I have no idea.
That's, that's a, that's a very keen... Okay, wait a minute. Okay.
It's a strong word.
Yeah.
Okay, you're making a motion to the director. What are you saying?
I'm sorry.
Look, most made a second, okay? We have more discussion. I mean, you know, we know that these were changed.
What is, what is, just one more thing. What is the rule?
We've kind of already went past the discussion. Should I call the question?
Go for it. Are you making a motion?
Yeah, we already have a motion.
Okay. Any other discussions? All in favor? All opposed? Do you vote?
I'm sitting here trying to take this either. It was my thing. This, no idea what I did. I did.
I may have to show our hands if we did vote because it's...
In favor. Me, me, Teresa, and Daniel and Ned voted for it. Josephine and April neglected to vote. Thomas voted against it. In light of improvement to your vote. Yes.
Okay. And executive session regarding negotiation personnel.
I'm going to have a quick question.
Most made a second, all in favor? You have two minutes. Okay, according to order, no actually taken executive session along the old business, um, no student checking firm contract on competition plans.
I make a question to approve ACOs for competition plan?
Second.
Most made second, except ACO is the contractor due to competition plan in discussion. All in favor? Okay. Consider accepting firm contract on the master plan, panel master plan. I make a question to approve benchmarking to the master plan.
Second.
Most made second, accept benchmarking of master plan, for master plan in discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Consider the first reading and the amendment versus the policy.
Mayor, the reason, I guess we could do discussion after.
Yeah, we have, if we have a motion.
I'll make a motion, accept the amended purchasing policy.
I thought we were going to put a committee together.
That's, that's what I understood too.
That's further down in your business.
If one of the motions is available, it's...
We have a first and a second motion there. Sorry, maybe ask them for discussion.
No, first is, we have a, we have a motion to accept it. We have a second. Most made a second to accept the first reading and the amendment of purchasing policy. Now we'll have a discussion.
The reason this is necessary, we went through our purchasing policies. They're vague in some areas and it's run, we've run into some very recent issues. So they've been updated. We've taken into consideration some of Mr. Wright's digressions. The sticking point would probably be that we take out the penalty section. There is a penalty section already in our ordinances that may need to be updated.
Who is we in on this ordinance? You said we, who is we?
Oh, sorry. It's, it's Ben.
It's him or Patrick. This is, this is Patrick's original purchasing policy that he submitted two months ago. And, and, and the email that I sent Patrick with the certain corrections, Thomas made those corrections to this policy and then submitted it for the council to approve. So essentially, our purchasing agent has re-offered his view on governance, his purchasing ability.
Is it he or is it, where did he get that? Do you know where you got it?
Yes, this actually came from the municipal association of South Carolina website and some back files that has recently been removed from their website. It's no longer able to be found. This is in fact, uh, used in only one town back in our county, I'm sorry. It's in Sumter County, this is new. The entire county of Sumter uses this as a procurement policy, not an ordinance. This is a policy, not to be used as an ordinance by law, anything I'd sort. It's simply a policy that's adopted by the procurement department of the county. This, this should not be used as a municipal ordinance period. This is, this is a policy. And it actually says policy. And on our, on our thing, it says purchasing policy. So if we're going to, if we're going to do a first reading on amendment and purchasing policy, I'm all for that, except we don't already have a purchasing policy. We have laws.
Well, I think that's a, I think that's semantics. I mean, it's also...
We mean semantics. We, we, the fact that this ordinance is not policy here.
Okay.
The administrator uses policies to govern the subordinates of his own. We, the ordinance is the government's.
Right, we're updating an ordinance here.
It's not what it says. It actually says that we're amend, amending to the purchasing policy.
Correct.
That's what it says on the agenda.
Right, that may...
So we're updating the ordinance now?
That may be, yes, we are.
So would you like to amend the agenda? Would you like to amend the agenda?
No, I don't know if there is.
Between you two, we're going to have to take this motion and start it.
Can, can, can I speak?
Yes.
I'll call the question.
Motion. Second.
All in favor of the vote on this?
You're, you're putting the question?
Call the question means that discussion stops.
And we, and we look if we want to accept his call for the question. We're going to look for, we're going to look for that call for question. All in favor? All opposed?
Who else?
Those were...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So is the problem with this, the word policy? And not ordinance?
Initially, yes. On our agenda, it says purchasing policy. It does not say purchasing ordinance.
I'm just trying to understand what just happened. You voted in favor of this?
I called the question. We mean, all discussion ceases when we stop and we move to the next item. It was a title.
The call to question is that then you...
You gotta, you gotta call the question, though. And then you call a question and everybody, then we stop and we vote. It's gotta be voted on.
Great, I got a second on the question. And then we go to the two call the question and then it was a title.
Once you call the question, then you're calling the question on whether you want to go in, for this or not.
Right.
That's what call the question is.
Discussion's stopped.
Yes, when you say call a question, that means discussion stops. Can you vote on this ordinance?
Yeah, well, I vote, you voted on his call for question.
It's, it's a sub, it's, it's, it's a secondary motion.
It's like he, when he called, you know, we gotta vote on if we want to accept his call to vote.
Correct?
Yeah.
It's a secondary motion.
I think that you call a question, you did not vote. You can call a question and go ahead and vote.
I don't care. Like, so if you want to argue this, that's fine. Let's do this later. I don't think it's appropriate for me to argue with us on how we're going to run it. Okay? So let me explain to you this one. If, if we're going to approve this, this actual purchasing policy actually doesn't even indicate that the town administrator is a purchasing agent. Shall I continue or is that enough?
That's, you can answer me.
Sure. I think, I think we've already called the question. We can stop and move on.
Okay. All right, it's a tie. And, uh, then, go ahead, we go vote. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
We got a vote and a vote. Okay, so we might ask them. Okay, go ahead and vote on it.
May I ask the question?
Yes.
If it's the wording, policy versus ordinance, can the word not be changed? To state ordinance or the agenda has to be amended?
We're not voting on the minutes. It just says this in the minutes. Policy, ordinance, it's essentially going to be the same thing.
It's not essentially going to be the same.
But the wording, the wording has to read what it needs to read. I mean...
Right, right. This right here is not the actual policy.
Yeah, general to the purpose that was put out to the public states. Where are we talking about? Right now, the public is assuming that we're talking about a purchasing policy.
But what you've got here is only purchasing, like only purchasing with the material procedures is how that...
Is that what we have? Is that put out to the public? Did they get a copy of that? Or do they just privy to the agenda?
They just prefer agenda.
Okay, so, Dan?
Is that, that's the issue? Is that it says policy on the agenda?
I don't think we give that. It's a policy. You're asking me to approve a policy. A policy that, what, subverts what our ordinance said?
No, this is, this will amend. Well, for example, you've asked to add a purchasing policy ordinance. So you add a word ordinance after policy. Your agenda.
I agenda, I...
Yeah. New business.
Yeah, so mine is committee to review purchasing policy ordinance.
So that the fact that it says ordinance after policy?
Yeah, the committee is to review the ordinance that we currently have. Want the policy, it's on my policy.
Says policy.
I didn't ask you to put policy. Either way, it says ordinance.
Okay. Alright. No more discussion. Call for a vote. Vote. All in favor? Accepting the first reading and amendment, uh, to the purchasing policy. All in favor?
Okay, if you agree to accept the first reading, can you amend it to the purchasing policy?
Um, all, all opposed?
I choose not to vote at this time.
Okay.
Yes, because I would like it to be clearly stated so there's no future problems. If it, if we want to be addressing purchasing ordinance, I would like it to say the purchasing ordinance. So that it's clearly stated in the minutes.
Okay. Alright, so we, if they have three to.
Does it, if you guys not?
Um, whether it was in the data.
She abstains, they have a right.
You're accessing both of the cards. You're not, you're not necessarily, I don't have to vote on that.
I understand, wanting to read what it needs to read so it won't be a problem in the future.
If they have same. So, so, so Thomas, Thomas and Tariq Josephine voted for the motion and are you abstaining from voting?
I am.
As well as the mayor abstained from voting, so the first reading of the amendment to the purchasing policy is back. Me and that's the question goes with the questions, the question wants to approve. For a first reading of the purchasing policy.
Yeah. Okay.
So we have a purchasing policy now.
What?
They abstained from voting, that means that, that vote goes towards the motion.
Okay. Moving on. Consider the second reading and amendment, uh, ordinance, uh, for police power.
I, I agree with the second reading, making a motion to approve the second reading and amendment to police power.
That's second.
Motion made and second to approve the amendment to, the amendment to ordinance for police power. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Okay. New business, consider creating a committee to review the purchasing policy ordinance amendments.
Think this is moot at this point, right?
No, um, no, it's not.
The ordinance, new business, there's nothing new about agenda.
So now we get to review the first reading, is that what it is?
Uh, no, we just, we passed a policy.
A policy, not ordinance.
We passed a policy.
In your packet was listed as ordinance.
Yeah, it doesn't use the word policy in the packet.
That was semantics. Semantics.
Again, again, usually word policy for this one as well.
No, it is, it is included because there's a difference between the word ordinance.
Like, like I said, that, that, that purchasing policy that's in here actually doesn't even clearly define who exactly is the purchasing agent. It just says purchasing agent, it doesn't actually say who it is. So, we, we passed a purchasing policy, we're gonna approve a purchasing policy, doesn't actually indicate who that purchasing agent is. Is this?
The thing is, consider creating a committee to review purchasing policy ordinance amendments. Anybody want to speak to that or we want to?
Can I, can I amend?
I think we should just have a committee to review ordinance period.
I agree with that. Make a motion to amend, to committee to, uh... Review ordinances in general?
We don't have to do that, if we're gonna make a subcommittee of the council to review ordinances.
The problem is just creating that committee.
Unless we're gonna have a meeting, we review ordinances every time we have a meeting. Then that's.
How do, how do we even create this committee?
Yeah, go on.
Who's gonna be on it?
Well, yeah, how big is the committee?
Three, three big, and you can't, uh, you, you know, you won't be available, I mean, you can't, you know, play on our label or whatever, you know.
We need to make rules first on how to... Are we nominated and then votes?
This is what the purchasing agent is, and it says that the council may designate the person. So once the council designates the person, that's the person who is the purchasing agent.
Yes.
That was the, the absolutely up my mind. I asked, you don't have to do that.
You don't approach speaking.
That's, that is not the way this works.
No, you don't, you do not.
We, we made a comment that was not correct.
I am the council person.
No. Let's call it over here. Call it over. Okay. Alright.
That's your policy, that's a causal procedure.
Okay. Understand. Will move on if we, if we want, uh, the, uh, committee or what?
I make a motion to form a committee to review ordinance.
That's second.
Motion made and second to, uh, to form a, to form a committee to review the ordinances, down ordinances. Any discussion on that? All in favor? All opposed?
Can we say hands again, this is getting a little.
Okay, so, so, let's, let's, let's. We're voting to approve the committee, to, to build the committee.
Yeah, I understand that, some hands are down and not up and.
Okay. Let's start over. All in favor in, in, uh, forming a committee to review all the ordinances? All in favor? Review all the ordinances? All opposed? You have a vote, Tom.
Yeah, I was still abstaining from that.
Well, okay, you just say. The fact. Always be. Alright, uh... Consider adopting the civil re-plegged to, to put down the back.
I make a motion to accept. To consider adopting the civil re-plegged for the town.
Second.
Motion made and second to adopt the civil re-plegged for town back. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Consider approving streetlight contract with, uh, Duke Power for Sunset and Hill. Yeah, we, you guys tell me about, um...
Yes, everything's in the back on there, it's, uh, it's, it's gonna add an additional fourteen dollars and six four cents a month, uh, and to make sure they reviewed their cost there, they have set it up as a, I believe it's a three-year contract. Of course, we'll continue to, 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 it'll just be added to everything on there. But they do ask us, thus, we initially create that three-year contract, which will be five twenty-seven point oh four table in monthly payments.
Alright.
My motion to approve the streetlights on Sunset and Hill.
That's second.
Motion made and second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? You had the H, H V A C and left the way to the back.
Yes, essential, uh, everything that I have on this and what I am recommending or would like to do at this point is to do a design bill on, uh, electrical needs to be able to review it. Um, recommending either that we have an R F Q or R F P for an electrical engineer to provide stamp drawings for licensed electrical contractor to then submit sealed bids or to do, um, it's up to either one, it's, it's to, to do a design bill to provide adequate power for the outside H V A C units.
You have any questions on that? Any discussions?
Yeah, I, um, there was a real over to, to the council. I'd like that, I'd like to put in some meetings, thanks. In regard to these.
Uh, in August of last year, the H V A C units began to fail and I've asked General Hare to come and give an evaluation of the units. Uh, if they could be repaired and what they recommended, it was noted that the units were approximately thirty years old and that parts uh, for them were not available. The units at the time were also determined by General Hare to be undersized for the size of the space. Uh, I sent an email to council on September seventh, two thousand, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, informing everyone of this estimated cost of the replacements, the units, uh, both here and the, uh, police department based on information received from General Hare. I included the email that due to the cost, it would need to be completely bid publicly. Uh, in the next sentence, I stated that you have the authority in Article Six, Section two thousand one forty-three to declare the project emergency that affects the public welfare, the health or safety of the public or town employees and that would wave the requirement. I recommended the council to find, to then find three separate companies to bid the project and let council select the lowest bid, which would save the time, uh, of competitive bidding. Uh, my last comment in email was, what are your thoughts? Uh, Mr. Wright responded that he needed an evaluation of the existing units, which I sent him that he agreed. That three bids was essential and that at the next council meeting, we could review and decide a necessary process before. He also noted that it may be feasible and less costly to install a completely new system that serves the building with less H V A C units. I received another email from this partner agreeing that this would be considered an emergency situation and if the rest of the council believes she doesn't have a problem moving forward. On September eighth, two thousand twenty-two, I sent an update to council that included a section that stated in regard to town hall H V A C updates. I had a recommendation from the council person to, uh, uh, redesign a new system that could use less units and would be more efficient overall. I added that I will have three quotes for you to review next Thursday on this new proposed direction. I reached out to three companies to receive quotes, General Air, Priority Heating and Air and C W G. When I spoke with each of them, I stated that the system needed to reduce the number of units when the quotes came in. Priority did not reduce the, uh, number of units, so I sent them an email to ask why. They stated that they were, they were unable to get the commercial equipment, would need to reduce the number of units. The packet for the October sixth council was sent out, which included all of these quotes and I made the recommendation to proceed with C W G, which was the lowest quote, um... Which was the lowest quote, which reduced the number of units as per directive. Uh, there was concern on how, how to pay for work and under the market guidelines had changed and this was an approved expense. The minutes reflect that Mr. Wright asked that it be tabled. It was added to the number third council meeting agenda and council proceed approved to proceed with an award to C W G, Heating and Air for price eighty-five thousand eight twenty-nine. It has been suggested that minutes were altered, however, these minutes were presented at the December first. The December first council meeting and council member Wright motion to accept the minutes from the October sixth, two thousand two meeting as written. Council member, uh, sext and sext, uh, council member sext and seconded the motion, the motion was carried unanimously. I had regularly been receiving calls from C W G stating the price was going to rise in November, so the units were ordered the following day after approval. I did not create a contract for work to be done, C W G was willing to do all work upfront and not receive payment until completed. Uh, the units arrived on approximately November fourteenth and C W G began installation shortly after. The product was completed as far as I knew in the last week of November. The heat was on the building and the thermostat worked, but I hadn't thought to check to see if the outside units were wired up. After speaking to C W, with C W G, the electric, electrical portion of the above pricing only included reconnecting the H V A C units to the existing disconnect. Due to the disconnect not being installed or undersized, C W G could not, uh, energize the units. The electrical portion and work was not within their scope of work. C W G stated, uh, that the units were much larger and therefore required much more power than the previous units. The replacement unit at the police station was the same size as the previous unit, so C W G was able to easily reconnect the electrical there. I then asked electrician to give me an idea of the cost of what all involved, all was involved to energize the units. Uh, that's when I discovered that the exterior panel for the H V A C units was only a hundred amp service and the new H V A C units potentially needed at least two hundred amp three-phase power for the new ten-ton unit. C W G then requested payment for the purchased, delivered and installed H V A C units, therefore I went ahead and paid C W G ninety percent of the cost, work. After the units were connected to, uh, sorry, I went ahead and paid C W G's ninety percent of the cost for the work and after the units were connected to the disconnect and operational, ten percent of retainage would be released. Uh, I reached out to several electricians to try to get a price, understand that all needs to be done, used to be energized. One electrician stated that the building did not have three-phase power and that it would need to be upgraded. Another electrician also stated that the service to the building would need to be increased along with a new panel in the basement. The panel in the basement is very old with two one-hundred-and-fifty-amp inline fuses, uh, next to a two-hundred-amp panel. One price came in at approximately forty-five thousand dollars, which would trigger full, uh, contract procedures. This is what I sent you an email in, on Fe- uh, Fe- uh, February seventh, upgrading, updating you on the situation. I stated the situation as I knew at the time and asked for suggestions and alternatives, also stated that the project would be bid out. On February ninth, I drafted an R F P to receive bids on the upgrade of electrical based on comments from both electricians. The following week, on the fifteenth, I spoke with our representative with R D O R C I, who stated that we would need a licensed electrician to proceed with the electrical needs as this would not be covered under C W G's mechanical license. He also stated that if we were bringing in new service to the building and altering or replacing the existing panel in the code requires additional work and effort to bring the existing electrical within the building to current standards. He suggested having a separate service just for the H V A C units instead of replacing the existing electrical in town hall. He stated that all of this would still need to be designed by an engineer. I sent an updated email to the council this date, February fifteenth, and withdrew the R F P. I also reached out to Lockhart Power to get feedback for bill. February sixteen, Lockhart came by and stated that town hall does, does have three-phase power going into building. However, I have been unable to find the panel inside with a three-phase service. At this point, there are two recommendations based on power stations with Michael Berry, who would be responsible for issuing an appointment to proceed. Option A, R F Q, R F P for electrical engineer to provide stamp drawings for licensed electrical contractors who then submit sealed bids. Or option B, R F Q, R F P for design bill to provide adequate power for the outside H V A C units. In the interest of time, I would recommend option B, as many larger electrical contractor firms have an in-house electrical engineer that will provide drawings prior to beginning the work. We can discuss further at the council meeting on March second.
Any questions? Comment?
You're asking to approve an engineer?
I'm asking that, uh, there were two options on there, was to do or do like, uh, R F P for electrical engineer to provide, either for us, have someone provide stamp drawings, then a electrical contractor can then bid out or combine the two together and have, um, have a electrical engineer provide stamp, uh, I'm sorry, for a design bill to provide adequate power for the outside H V A C units. So first off, they would have to design the electrical system needing to be able to do the work. And then, once that's done, and, um, the. And then once that's done and, um, the plan is approved by the, um, by RCI over there, that, um, then, uh, they would begin the, the rest of the work itself, which is actually doing, doing what they designed. So, design first and getting that and then having people come in and bid on that design as a separate, two separate things on there or combine them to one.
So what are we saying right now that units are not functioning? The units are not functioning?
No, the, the, the heat works in the building. It's just the HPAC that's not there are currently not connected to power. So as we get further and further into the summertime, uh, it's gonna get hotter and hotter and warmer. There's no AC.
And there's your cost?
What's that?
Never mind.
I, I, uh, I wanna, I wanna make sure that we all understand that in December, we're cold and everything absolutely one-hundred percent is complete and functional at not only town hall, but also the police department. Uh, everything is one-hundred percent complete and functional and working properly. And, and then in February, after the February council meeting, we heard that the AC units actually aren't working and they're not functional and they're not cooked up. So I make a motion to do an RFQ for a design build company to provide adequate power for the air conditioning units outside.
Very emotional.
Is that option A or option B?
You're going option A.
Yeah, it's the cheaper version of the two.
Yeah.
Option B.
I, I, I feel as if it should be an RFI. Let's, let's get some information first with potential pricing. So if you wanna do an RFP, that's fine, RFQ, but, however, I would like information as to how this is going to work. And I would like information as to how much this is potentially going to cost. And then we can go from there.
Um, also I want to point out on page two, because we amended the minutes to be that CWG Heating and Air was the price for seventy-nine-nine. The, it's stating in here that the council approved it even after the price of eighty-five eight hundred and twenty-nine.
This is the memo that he wrote to us. So, it's just, it's just this memo that he wrote to us, in a way, in a way, he said at a council meeting or didn't say.
But if we approve these minutes, we're saying?
This, this, what I approve, this is the memo that he wrote to us.
You have approved it in the memo. Approved in the memo.
But it's covered into the minutes, he had agreed, so if one goes into the minutes, it's a mix.
Well, we'll approve it next, I mean, he read from the memo that he actually. This is his statements, his statements.
Ma'am, please. Question, explain, wouldn't you say again on the, uh, option B that you wanted, what was that again?
An, an RFI. I would, I would like information, whether you do it through an RFI or RFQ, I would like information and potential pricing for next month so we can get this done, because it's gonna get hotter.
With the, I mean, that's essentially what we end up doing with, with, with B is we end up pricing, what you'll end up having is bids on an electrical engineering firm who can actually do the work itself, so you'll have a cost estimate on there, um.
More, that is more.
Motion, I make a motion. I approve, I make a motion to approve RFQ for the design build to provide adequate power for the outside air conditioning.
That's what, yeah, that's, that's B. Okay. Look, motion made, second. Any questions, any other questions?
What's the difference, well, what's the difference between RFQ and RFI?
RFI, request for information.
The Q is just for a quote, right, for the cost?
He will have to put a scope of work that identifies the conditions that need to be repaired or remedied that contractors can come and evaluate and build a price towards. And then, once they build a price, then that will essentially give the RFP as well, request for qualification or request for prices. So RFQ can do both, RFQ is just.
So you're saying RFQ is RFQ for qualification, not for quote?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, any questions in, uh, from you, um, back and forth, back down, down the template?
I, I gave you a copy of the template that's on there and the, what I was just kinda looking for is if y'all got a chance to go through some of it. If there's, I'm just looking for, especially, it's the template, I didn't do anything to it. And I just wanna kinda, I wanna know what you want or don't want in the employee handbook and then I will make the corrections and bring it back, bring y'all to review or go to, we could have all this, we could do a work session and we'll do a real work session off-site somewhere.
So what current handbook are we using?
I can get a copy of it for you.
It's, it's currently the National Association's, uh, guideline handbook, basically what it is. It's what we approved last time, so we should be currently using that.
It's in one hundred and twenty, twenty minutes.
Yeah, it's on this twenty twenty.
Yeah, we, we should already be using this, uh, National Association handbook.
Yeah.
It's a little different than the one that's in there, but I can, I can see it.
I just remember a couple of years ago, we approved that and we're using that. The difference is that I think it probably says pack, kind of pack of energy, you know, different, different, uh, employees, you know, any divisions and any partners.
And I think I had added, or asked like that, a couple of months, that was more inclusive of today's gender and.
Yeah.
What do you say, you, you want to go with the what we have, or would you say?
I'm interested. We already have what, I mean, what, what I, what I looked at, we, on our established, it's the same.
I tell you what, look at that one and then if you have any questions, I'll answer them, you know, we'll be back with you in a little bit.
If, if you'd like, I mean, I can bring you several, several samples from other communities that are out there.
Well, if we, if we, uh, three twenty, twenty, it should be okay now, I mean, uh, let's, uh, I don't have one, I don't know, uh.
I can get you a copy before you leave.
But is that the one that we approved in twenty twenty?
The one you, yes.
This is the one they approved.
There. Let's look that over and you'll be back with you on that.
That's fine.
Okay, see, anybody have any questions on that? Okay. Come in.
Like I've done before, I'm just gonna skip, try to get some highlights in here just to remind you of the, the update. Last time I checked, I think there's only two council members that already contacted them directly, um, who needed to make those, those updates on there. Um, workplace harassment training that was requested at one of the last meetings has been completed. The work at two forty-eight Green Street was done and cleared off by the property there, so that looks great. Does anybody have any questions? One of the, well, one thing I do wanna make sure we, we point out is, um, there were two dates recommended for doing a, uh, keep one spark more beautiful, uh, pack of cleanup. Uh, and based on what I sent out to council on April fifteenth was the preferred date on there, which I've already sent out to, uh, keep one spark more beautiful. If y'all are okay with that, uh, we can go ahead and start promoting that. They're gonna send, they're gonna mock, mock up some flyers. Um, I mentioned the idea of possibly doing like a grill out. I know, I think the, um, the fire department has a big grill, I think, heard that. And I don't know if there may be a possibility that the town, the, uh, fire department can partner on this and then maybe have a lunch afterwards for all the volunteers who come out. Um, these are just some ideas, uh, wanted y'all to consider for that. As I mentioned in the last meeting, uh, I'd like for y'all, I'm suggesting that the council section, uh, that, let's see. Uh, the trash pickup, uh, I would like to suggest to council that the section regarding, um, the lid needing to be closed be waived. Um, I've had a lot of complaints about that. We have a stack of comments and complaints about that where we've got elderly people who, a pizza box is keeping it from being closed and it's two inches closed and it doesn't get picked up. Um, so I'm recommending to council that that get changed on there. Plan Commission still has, uh, a place open, so does World's Earnin Appeals. And then the upcoming meetings that are, um, on the agenda that are coming up. Oh, last but not least, we have the farmer's market. Uh, are y'all interested in having the farmer's market come back, uh, made through Congress?
Where are you going?
I think that's, I think that's nice, but here.
Well, what I was, I'm suggesting is instead of putting up at the amphitheater, that you put it right down below in front of the museum. Uh, part of the reason that I, I'd been told was people couldn't see it or know that it was up at the amphitheater. So if it was put right here in front of the museum, everyone would see us, they're coming through the traffic circle.
It was, yeah.
Yes.
It was down here?
Yes, it was in front of the museum.
Okay.
Well, he, he wanted it all there down there.
Yeah.
So it was always down here?
Yeah, why, why, uh, we do it.
Okay.
The construction.
Construction made it up there?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a consensus from the council? One, the one thing I wanna do is at least have a committee to kinda look at it and kinda talk over how we do it and how it would be done. Uh, one of the recommendations and at least not have them there is if it's done every single Saturday, typically you don't have as many crowds there, but if you have it every other Saturday or maybe once a month or something like that, then you end up having a more sense of urgency to come out. But, uh, if I can create some type of committee to be able to review that and look that over and make a recommendation to council on moving forward with that.
If I have any problems with that? I have a good idea.
Is there any questions on the report that I gave?
No, I don't have anybody. Okay.
Building builders.
My name is Counselor. After the month of February, uh, we're still feeling or we're thankful that the county has yielded, um, performance of those inspections and given them to us. Have performed a few inspections, uh, a lot of gas releases, power releases, I can't say a lot, I have about three, uh, gas releases, two left over. Um, and then working on the addition on Glenn screws, uh, working with a contractor in that regards. Um, on code enforcement, um, set up violations there. Um, had a conversation with the, uh, town attorney this past week, um, I was telling Joseph and Patrick, uh, Wendy's kinda got clipped in regards to the, um, inspection, inspection, the due process requirements that Mr. Frost, um, believes, um, and he, and he's correct in regards, but trying to track down these folks. Um, so one of the occupants or the homeowners that we found on one of the properties, um, difficulty locating that individual. Um, so Mr. Frost would encourage to exhaust any additional efforts to try to find that individual. Uh, whether that's reaching out to the county to issue a summons to try to locate him, whether that's looking through obituaries, whether that's trying to find next to Ken through probate court, tracking down through DMV, four-year notice, et cetera. So, um, he issued guidance to do a lot of ex, not extra work, but a lot of work that were to find these individuals to serve this summons. Uh, before, just followed with our ordinances that says fifteen days and you receive a fine. Um, so there's a lot of work, um, needed to track down all this information. Um, another occupant that we found, we just picked and choose, so to speak, randomly off the chart or off the connotations. Um, one of the gentleman's, uh, listed address of ownership and more, South Carolina. Uh, we reported that tax record for that location, a different owner on that property. Uh, we then referenced, cross-referenced that address with another address, that owner is different. Uh, then tracked down the deed of transfer, that was different. So for one occupant, we have four to five different addresses for the same registered owner in the Sparkville County tax record. So it can be quite tedious in trying to find, uh, the folks and serving them this piece of paper that says you need to conform, you need to, uh, clean up your property. Uh, Mr. Frost doesn't believe that just posting the property in a conspicuous location, um, has the property maintenance code allows, but he believes in due process and I agree with that. Um, just a lot, some more effort needed and many more days before we can say we've exhausted the fifty-day turnaround and appeal time or the thirty-day appeal time. Um, just a lot more work is gonna be needed in finding the, finding these occupants and the due processes. Um, we also need to reach out to, I missed Ms. Vicky today, uh, or Judge Vicky, um, at another town, she was in session. Uh, need to speak with her in regards to what she anticipates for the common misdemeanor offenses such as high grass and harmful vehicles, trash and rubbish, what her expectations are and, uh, holding sessions and what she expects from us. Uh, we definitely don't wanna waste her time, but wanna make it, um, valuable and, um, useful and efficient, whether that's she wants to see, you know, potentially five or ten cases at once or once a month, once a week, once every two months. Um, need to speak with her to see what her anticipation is, because she's really key in us, uh, cleaning and serving these summons.
Any?
Yes, sir, concludes staff and board.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you for your work. Oh, just, nothing.
So I'm looking at this report, could you tell me what the N and Y is saying on the document?
Oh, I'm sorry, the N and Y is in regards to, um, complaints. There's a top header there that's gonna say date, number, address, type, so yes, no is in regards to complaints. So anything with the Y, I include that on the next meeting in the printout, uh, but that's the complaints, where complaints were issued versus a random, uh, driver.
What, 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 what does N mean?
The N means no complaint, meaning we will observe the house upon drive around, so to speak, or random inspections. The Y is actually item of complaint.
Some idea.
Yes, sir. And that's, I appreciate this, uh, Ms. Wright's, um, effort in regards to the, uh, website of issuing a letter to me by email that states, um, putting your name, putting the address, I have a complaint, what is it? It's an awful car, trash, vehicle, rubbish, et cetera. And that email gets sent to me as a complaint, you can upload photos, et cetera. Uh, so those are a way that complaints can be reported as well.
So have you addressed the issue with, uh, my family relationship?
That's the work in progress of finding those. Um, so Mr. Frost believes, um, that although, although the letter may be delivered, um, like is the, um, the second column from the end, it has varying dates starting one thirty, one ten, two twelve, twenty-nine, twelve thirty. Uh, although it may be delivered, he's not confident in regards to who may have signed for it. So the letter could have come to, uh, my house and, uh, my son could have signed for it, not necessarily that Michael signed for it. So he's, he doesn't, he's not confident in regards, just 'cause it's delivered, just because the code says that, it's not valuable or enough to proceed with a court hearing or a court case for that person. Uh, we need, you know, direct evidence to show that Michael received that letter or Mr. John received that letter that was summoned by the Sparkville County officer beside our district, which a lot of these are.
And the ones with the most recent dates of February that with nothing by it means they haven't been issued yet?
That's correct, this was as of twelve twenty-two is when this report was presented. Um, so those, those letters have been mailed, so just as of twelve twenty-two, um, this is when the report was turned in.
Could you just run across and get the hand, because I'm confused with all of the, all the dates?
Um, the column left is gonna be an open or closed column.
Is that the first?
Yes, ma'am. No, ma'am, no, ma'am, there's a column that's our left, is if you see at the bottom left, it says closed. So that first column is open, closed, second column is a date.
Well, well, then. Okay, so it's open, closed, and then the date, and it was opened or closed?
Yes, ma'am, or observed.
Or observed. Okay.
And next is just an identifier to give it a unique.
Of an ID.
Yes, ma'am. The address. Uh, the item, that's gonna be the type. So I've kinda expanded this to a code enforcement item or a, if you see near the bottom, a renault edition or a camp electrical plumbing or renaults. Just, I would say code enforcement is a type. TYP.
What's the NY people?
Uh, mechanical electrical plumbing.
Is there anybody we can have a legend on the next?
Yes, ma'am.
That identifies the, okay. Okay.
Uh, the next column, the Y and the N is yes or no as regards to complaints. The next column, what was the date of the letter or the, um, the date of the observation? The next column, what was the date of the letter, or the, the date of the observation? So I retract that, Ms. Sexton, if you notice the column on the far left, the day is actually logged into this spreadsheet.
Well, which, what?
The second column from the left, that's the date that's actually logged into the spreadsheet.
The one that you said was observed day?
Yes, ma'am.
The day that was logged?
Yes, ma'am. So when I open the Excel spreadsheet and put in this information.
Well, okay, okay. So it could have been observed before, but this was when you logged it?
Correct.
So, so being after the complaint, that's the date of observation?
Yes, ma'am.
And then you observed whatever it was.
Correct.
Okay, and then that top of the day column has?
That's the date when the letter was mailed. The next column is going to be the date on the letter. The date of the letter was either delivered or vacant. That information's pulled from the USPS when you track these certified letter.
Oh, the date on the letter when it was?
So for example, in the letter, I'm going to mail it at the post office on Monday, for example, but I'm going to give the applicant three or four days for the mail to get through. Because so, on the letter, it states you have within fifteen days of the date of this letter, so I think it's unfair if I mail a letter on Monday, they're going to miss three or four days. So I front date the letter.
Okay, okay, okay. And then the next column?
The last date column there is the date it was, let's say, delivered, or any information provided by the USPS service. And the last column there is any action associated, whether it's no action or call, made contact with the individual, et cetera.
And they, you're given fifteen days?
Yes, ma'am, that is in our ordinance. That's also in the International Property Maintenance Code. But we've been counseled to extend that and before we make any additional actions or ramifications to verify that this letter was delivered to, for example, let's just say one sixty of Fuller Street, although it does say it was signed and delivered, that's the third row at the top, which, and I haven't received any phone calls, action from this property. We need to go and verify once again that this property, and this property owner received due process.
So it just has the date, and a date info was delivered means that it was received by someone?
That's, yes, ma'am. It might not have been me, it could have been my son, it could have been you, it could have been who knows.
Yeah, I think so.
Correct. I'll include the legend on next month, and I'll include the headings.
Okay, thank you, Chris. You can move.
Good evening, council. First up, the cost of service, during the last month, that police sent cost of service, nothing unusual, typical stuff we typically got. We're running right along with our typical stats, and that the breakdown of the type of call we had is exactly where I expected them to be, though it always. I had several complaints on Brewster Street about some juveniles kind of just a mischief. Several video clips becoming of me, and spent some nights here to try and track those people down. I found some parties that, of course, claimed that they were not responsible, had a serious conversation with them, and miraculously those issues have stopped. So maybe I've found the right people at this point, but there were quite a few complaints about it. Research about his driving structure the last couple of weeks ago, an officer, Hensley, over in the corner, dressed like a magician, is our new police officer, since we're setting we, having him onboard. So if you haven't met him already, please get through and talk to him. And on staffing, our efforts that we have made to make us a more attractive employer have been paying off. We're having class one officers that are applying now. I had interviewed two this week, both of which are hired candidates, that are both going through the hiring process as we speak, want to be testing in the morning, want to be testing on Monday. So they're fantastic and awesome, and they both specifically said that the changes that we made to what we're going to do for police officers is why they have decided to apply now, and why they had not applied before. So that's wonderful information to have. We also have two previous reserve officers that have worked for the town before that have come back, that are wanting to get certified, plus I've got some great leads for some new reserve officer candidates that we're going to be working with and moving forward and driving for other friends. We're starting to get the lead commission vehicles up to Columbia, all of those in the district office, putting their prep together, it's just a matter of time of the two of us taking the vehicle up and driving the vehicle back, so those are going to start disappearing very soon. We got some training from state administrative logistics office on the federal government surplus property program that will result in leading acquisitions for the town. I mean acquisitions, big, big dollar amount generators, and hopefully some barricades and some things that we really need. If we're willing to pick those up from military bases, we're probably going to be able to get those very soon, and absolutely free of the energy, effort, and time to go to pick those up. So that will start moving now. Currently in the process of grant writing for twenty-three federal and state public safety grant back season. Trying to focus on grants for body armor. These programs specifically want you to have fitted body armor, fitted to each individual person, so that person must be measured like a tailor, otherwise it doesn't qualify for it. And we, we have a little liability if we aren't having fitted armor for each one of the officers going forward, so we're staffing whole police department, so they need to have fitted armor. I'm looking at a potential network for the police department to handle our camera systems in the cars require external storage, potential evidence handling solutions and software, and a single vendor solution for body camera and vehicle cameras that will put all of that data in the cloud, as opposed to actually having to physically touch it, bring it in the building, and put it on hard drive to store ourselves. That is a very valuable resource, but also be much safer for the officers in general and for liability for the town. So this is a project I have been running now. Any kind of questions I can answer from you?
Questions, Thomas?
Good job.
How much of the count?
Yes, I do. There was incidents this week with emails that, that go back and forth between council members and between our council meetings. Some council members are privy to these conversations, other council members are not, and will not may aware of them until it's presented. This particular email, well, let me just read this in a, before this is. I personally do not like the idea of discussing and or asking to make decisions regarding important town business through emails. Much of it needs to be discussed and recorded in our town meetings so it does not get lost. I know that some emails are okay regarding certain issues or updates that the council would need to know on issues already discussed at town council meetings, but majority needs to be discussed at meetings as it, as they need to be recorded, and I need to manage to show transparency. Because we discuss a lot of stuff that's important that the town would need to know and wouldn't be in our meetings, just go back and through emails, and they need to be discussed here. Now, I don't know how we got started with discussing through emails of what was going to happen at town meetings, or what we need to discuss at town meetings, or what are you going to talk about, and what she's going to say, because it's not privy to everybody. I also do not like getting emails that are only made in result of conversations that have taken place between council members with the administrator and or mayor. This leaves the council member, I'm speaking on a setup with implied conclusions that are not true. It's, to me, it sends a false pretense to me as a council member as to what is transpiring behind the emails. I don't know. I don't know that something happened behind that. I just get a angry soul of, of something that I like, well, how in the heck did this happen? To me, it causes mistrust and towards other council members, the mayor, and the administrator. And I would think that it might have caused mistrust with other council members. There was an email where a citizen emailed a council member and wanted to change our order of agenda. I asked it to be made transparent, it was not. Here is copies of that. We do not and should not pay suggestions from a citizen as to how we might need to change or structure our agenda. Our agenda is set up as it should be, and the structure should not change. With this, me assuming that if we see the agenda as it is, and then all of a sudden it changes to something else, because the citizen asked. Okay. So of course, this upset me because our agenda, as far as Robert's rules is concerned, after we set it up, is to be permanent, and is to not change. Mister Administrator, in one of these emails where I had sent him, because I, and y'all saw that, you know, because I couldn't believe he changed the agenda because the citizen asked him to. And he said, it doesn't matter to him how the agenda was laid out, and it shouldn't matter to him, it shouldn't matter to us, as far as Robert's rules. It says that it should be after we have set it up. To create your agenda, you should first start by building an order of business, which obviously has been built, has been, has been for as long as I've been a council member, it has been structured the way it is structured. This should be permanent outline of the flow of your meetings, and the agenda for each meeting can be created once this is in place. So once we have our outline as how we want to structure our business, it is to remain permanent. It is not for a citizen to call in and suggest that we move a line item from one to the other. And it is important that we do that to structure in our agenda. And in this email, you will see where the citizen asked a council member that he think it was, that it was fine, it was, it was okay. Administrator says, well, I need to, in order for me to change, it has to be a two-thirds vote. I was not called, two-thirds vote is four people. He reached out to two, I don't know who those two people were, who said that they didn't mind the agenda being changed as before, two-thirds of seven is four. I wasn't included. So it, it was changed. So then after he is corrected by the, the council member of, you know, what he's telling the citizen of what he needs to get in order for him to be able to change this agenda, he's corrected, which that should have stopped there. But this citizen was also included further, as you see in the email regarding town business. It's not his business, this was town's business, so you can read that and read what I wrote back. So it is important how our agenda is structured, it is important that it stays as it is, and we do not accept suggestions and change our agenda from a citizen, because it, all it does is sets a precedent for someone else to be able to come, oh, well, I've got it changed, now he's got to go to this call down there and ask him so and so that can change that. This is town council. Yes, we're here for our citizens, but our citizens do not run our meetings. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. That it? That we have?
Yep. Another thing I have is a rush to make decisions. I have also felt on some items and issues that the administrator and some council members, for instance, have decided to, on issues that I felt required more thought and discussion than we had given, and they wanted to say, you know, in two weeks I need to know this, or next month we need to get this done, next month or whatever. We have never worked in that fashion. We have never rushed into making a decision. You know, we, we all work, we all can, we don't have days off that other people have off. It, it, you know, it might be two or three days before I can really look at something and maybe put some thought into it, because I work all day long, I come home, I have other things that I have to tend to. So it's not things that can be rushed and looked at, and I have felt on a lot of items that we have been looking at, I have felt rushed to make a decision, because it's like, well, if, if I don't do this, you know, they're going to go up, and you know, it's like, if they do, they do, because look where we are now in making some of those decisions. That's my fault of that. And, and just, just to put that out there, you know, it, it doesn't matter if it takes this time to do it, because in taking our time, we get it done right, not rushing into it and just raising our hand, and not fully researching it, each and every one of us, not just one person or two people. We all need to research and not rely on someone else, and if we don't rely on someone else, and we don't like what someone else tells us, and get upset by that, then you, you, you need to take responsibility and, and research, and make sure the decision you're making is the correct decision for you. I would have to agree with you on that. So we, we, we all should be responsible for looking into whatever it is that we're looking into, to research the issues, and, and make our own informative decision, not based on what somebody else said or what we said, and if we don't do it, don't be mad and upset when someone else tries to educate you on that.
Good.
Now, I'm so agree with you with the back and forth with the emails, it, it has gotten excessive.
It is.
It's a lot, I can't even.
No, you can. I have to print them out and read them and understand, and I'm like, this stuff needs to be handled in a meeting. This stuff does not need to be going back and forth. We never did that before. We never have done it before, and I don't know why we're even doing it now. Sure, something, little update on this, little update on that, fine, in between meetings.
And I also don't like being excluded from emails.
Right on, me neither.
So.
Me neither. And there's a lot of that going on too. You know? Threesomes, twosomes, and we don't know to the last minute what happened, where did this even come from? But it's already been discussed, it already been, they've planned it already, got going on. So, a lot of kinds of same stuff.
That it?
Yep. One more. Lastly, I just want to say, you know, enough is enough. I'm, I'm just tired of ordinances being broken, issues not being handled correctly, and we hear from the administrator, I'm sorry, I won't do it again, or I will really, I'll, I'll read the ordinances and, and try and do better in the future. I hear a lot of that. It's like the ordinances broke, the issue was not handled correctly, and that's the excuse that we get. We have sent amongst ourselves, he needs to be taught, we need to teach him who does. We try to talk to him, we try to tell him, he was even told about Gary Frost, our town administrator, Ned Ketter, town manager, council members, Trey Ubank, Jeff Shaker, and how he needs to conduct himself with his council, and he doesn't do it. I am sick and tired of it. I am. We would not be in the situation we are in right now if he would follow procedure and the recommendations that we asked of him. He works at the pleasure of the council. Anyone who has the experience that he has on his resume and his work in the many towns that he has should have already by now known our ordinances and studied our ordinances. That would have been the first thing he should do. On some of the ordinances he knows, other ordinances, oh, I, I didn't know that. And you can't tell me you don't want to knock it up. I think that's what we have to say.
Ms. Jones, thank you.
I do. I'd like to thank out to you for watching the channel for about a few months more. And I hope this is a good series and again I hope to be able to keep going forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe we could give a link to that video put on the town website so that it can be shared on our stuff. Very good, very nice of you to spend your time to do that. I think it's, I think it's important. One of the things that I was thinking about as far as that school is the town is responsible for the effort that they're doing. And it is a dire need for paint job. So I think that, I think that very soon we should find a contractor to paint that building. We talked about it before and if somebody can do it, but if it didn't happen.
I was just going to say, I know who was supposed to do it, it didn't happen.
It just didn't work out. So I think, I think it's kind that we do take care of the building. I would be interested to see some disrepair, you know, kind of that.
It's going to need some, it's going to need some windows, it's going to need some boards.
That's right. And if I'm not mistaken, I think that the town apartment is responsible for the other people that build it one hundred percent. So let's, let's do an evaluation.
Oh, they, they got a grant, the re- roof is got a real high roof.
It does.
I'm like the city town, you know, my center I would have for my people to learn about the area. I was thinking I might spring out in that little room with the scope.
No, I, I don't know that I've, you know, I'm not an expert on this, but I don't have any other school with the same history in this area. So preserving that would be a big, a big problem to, even if it's just in a historical museum fashion. If we can, if we can find and do something to do, that would be great, but just perfect, just conservative would be, would be necessary to do that. I think, you know, we can figure something out on that. Text my gov. Do you use text my gov? Mr. Barrett?
Not aware of it.
No? Administrator, do we currently pay for text my gov?
I believe we do, yes.
Can you tell me when the contract expires and maybe we can stop paying for something that we don't actually use?
We're responding to stuff that's out there. We could do a lot more with it.
We as in who?
I, I have been responding to some of the stuff that's out there that goes through text my gov.
You have?
I've been making some updates to some of the like or some of the automatic responses that are in there.
Yeah. I've had a few citizens tell me that they've consistently put code violations on there and they've done it repeatedly for the last several months. And those, those code violations, we have linked it on Mr. Barrett's report. So I don't know if maybe that section of text my gov isn't showing up in whatever you're reading, I'm not really sure. But go ahead.
Maybe speaking out of turn, I don't need to recognize another member or citizen, but I am getting emails notification. I'm not certain where they're coming from on that email, but I am getting notifications. I'm not certain if it's coming from text my gov or the content that this writes to. I'm not certain where it's coming from. We already have notifications, so I can look more directly at where the sender is from.
I'm more concerned about if we're using the service or not and what are we paying for the service and is it worth it? If we have a different method that's working better, then maybe we can get rid of that. It is actually quite a nuisance on the website pops up and it's really aggravating. So multiple wise, of course. But anyway, so I, I would like, I would like you to figure that out, whether that's something necessary or not. If we're not going to use it for what it's worth and it's not going to work out and now we have a different, a whole different method anyway that's probably going to work better, how do we pursue being rid of it?
Well, if my understanding, that would be for code enforcement issues is that, but there are other ways that you can get information out there. And people can also contact twenty-four seven if they're, say, looking for a particular item or a particular person, that there's a lot of responses that has information out there. I can give you a copy of everything that words could have put in and what the responses are, so you can have an idea of what's kind of coming through.
Okay. Yeah, so with, when Ms. Sexton was talking about, I can agree that, that there's a lot of emails back and forth. And I think one of the things that everybody needs to understand is what's considered electronic forums and what's not considered electronic forum. So the municipal association's app line basically gave a recommendation that said electronic forum is when the majority of council members engage in communications through emails. So what would, what would constitute that is the administrator emails the entire council and then Tony and then the chief and then Michael Berry and this person and who knows who else, you know, fifteen people emailing. And then we all did it and then we replied to that same email. When they all reply, when one of us replies to that thread, then that is what constitutes a court. I actually sent him the link and asked him before to notify all council members that this is in fact what constitutes that, that electronic forum. I would assume that nobody got that name or didn't get it. I couldn't tell you. So I think it's necessary, we talked about it now. When you are getting an email from the administrator that nine other people are copying it into, you must reply solely to the individual himself, the owner. Not to all, not reply to all. If reply all, that's what constitutes a court. And as well, I'm going to ask you right now, and I hope that the rest of the council members can agree to this. I don't think it's necessary that whatever you send me, our town clerk, our police chief, our attorney and maybe even Jeff Shaker gives a copy of everything that you say to us. I don't think that's necessary. Our town clerk doesn't need to hear that you amended the agenda. Our town clerk doesn't need to hear that I corrected you on what you said to the citizen. She needs to just do her job and she doesn't really want to do that. But I'm not asking you to talk. I'm talking, this is my time. So what I'm asking is, is the rest of the council can agree to that, that we, we limit who all is in our email threads and.
Well, they should be small council because it's council whatever it is.
Yeah.
Not that you're something, not something that needs to be discussed.
It's, it's, the whole form of council is what's being demoralized by this whole process. Is, is, it's disenfranchising the fact that the council is what runs the whole show. And our perceived town manager is attempting to change that. And our town administrator works for this council. He should be doing as we've asked. And abiding by the state's laws and the FOIA laws and all these other things. Anytime one of us sends an email and we ask that the rest of the council members know, the way that this works is if I sent him an email that everybody needs to understand. And he needs to forward it to everybody on the council, not Tony and the chief and Michael Berry and whoever else. That's not the way it's supposed to work. Mr. Frost should not get an email. Because every time Mr. Frost gets an email, and that's potential billing if he do it. If he has to sit there and read every single email, we pay by the hour. Yes, there's a retainer, but that only covers certain amount of money. Am I right, Tom?
We want contracts, a lot of them only covers.
And he is charging two fifteen dollars a day.
Which pretty much that's just a retainer. So I would like the emails to stop as well. And I think form and function should be that if I send a request, then I think that request should be sent to everybody as well. So that we all completely understand who's making the request and who's doing what. Communication between me and the administrator, you guys should all, everybody should understand what I'm requesting and what I'm not requesting. And I've attempted to do that. My emails typically always say they can send this to the council members. I have religiously said that the entire council is important and necessary and I will never change that. It needs to be the entire council that lays in on any decision.
As it was and what I sent to round, that was asked and it wasn't done. He called two council members, which they're getting out who they were, they're in copy of.
I also want to talk about this purchasing policy thing that was adopted tonight, or not adopted, but the first reading was approved. I think, I think that council members should evaluate their perspective on, the ones that, the ones that approved this should evaluate their perspective on things. This is, this is what our, the town administrator brought to the council for his recommendation for approval. And I've heard already before from another council member that the administrator is allowed to recommend ordinances and in fact, he's not. He's only allowed to recommend policy. Policy is, just that is policy. It's, it's not a requirement, it's nothing more than.
Not on his contract?
Not legislation. Our ordinances do not actually say that he can recommend ordinances changing. They actually say.
The contract or his contract?
I don't have his, I have a copy of his contract. I couldn't imagine the contract saying that he's allowed to govern what he, or he's allowed to recommend ordinances that govern physicality of the building. If it doesn't, I think, you know, I'm finding that agreeing the ordinances allows him purpose of, on policy. But, but to take a purchasing policy and approve it as a potential ordinance. I think we should, I think we should evaluate what we're looking at also before we, before we just take a, a, a draw on this, you know, and start voting on things that. I look forward to next month to see if this is going to roll through.